Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Oxnard Planning Commission regular meeting for Thursday, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty one. Our start time this evening is six oh one. A quick housekeeping item in accordance with Governor Newsom's executive order N dash twenty nine dash twenty. Members of the commission and staff will be participating via teleconference. As shown on the agenda and online, please email all written public comments to planning at Oxnard dot org. Those wishing to speak may visit Oxnard dot org slash city dash meetings to fill out the speaker form. Or by calling eight zero five three five seven eight seven eight by two P M. The day of the meeting. While participating in the meeting, please keep your microphones muted until your turn to speak. For my colleagues, please use the raise hand feature when you wish to speak. Once you have been called on, please then click the hand again to lower. Because the meeting is electronic, all votes will be done by roll call. Lastly, for presenters, when needing to advance to the next slide, please clearly state next slide. At this stand, that concludes our housekeeping. We'll now move to our Madam Secretary to establish a quorum.
Chair Chavez.
Here.
Vice Chair Ojo.
Here.
Commissioner Connolly.
Here.
Commissioner Meyer.
Here.
Commissioner Nash.
Present.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez is absent. And we have a quorum.
Thank you for that. We'll go ahead and move into our pledge of allegiance. Mr. Colwitz, do you mind leading us to see me?
I would be honored. Okay, if you could put the right hand over your heart and please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation under God. Invisible and liberty with justice for all.
Thank you for that, Mr. Colwitz. We'll now move into our next item, which is public comments on items not on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the commission regarding any item not on the agenda, but within the subject matter's jurisdiction of the commission may do so at this time. However, the commission cannot take action on any items presented during public comments and will be referred to the commission secretary. All public comment speakers will have three minutes. Madam Secretary, just confirming, we do not have any public comments for items not on the agenda, correct?
Correct.
Thank you for that. We'll now move, go ahead and move into our consent agenda. This is approval of our minutes from our August twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty one meeting. What I actually would like to do, because all of those commissioners are present that were at both of those meetings. We'll actually go ahead and approve both me, uh, minutes at the same time. So the August twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty one and September second, two thousand and twenty one. Commissioners. Uh, Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. Um, I would like to make a motion that we approve the minutes for both meetings.
Thank you, Commissioner Nash.
And I said, and I second.
Thank you. Any discussion? It's been moved a second to approve our minutes from August twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty one meeting and our September second, two thousand and twenty one meeting. Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Meyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Nash.
Aye.
Commissioner Connolly.
Aye.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ojo.
Aye.
Chair Chavez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you for that. We'll now go ahead and move into our ex parte declarations for public carrying items. Vice Chair Reho.
Uh, thank you, Chair Chavez. Um, I am accusing myself on agenda item F one. Due to eighteen U S code section two oh three and eighteen U S code section two oh five. If there is no objection, I will turn off my audio and video and get back on for agenda item F two. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Connolly.
Uh, yes, I have known one of the um, email comments that we received after the, after we received the agenda from Ms. Turner. I've known her personally and professionally for over twenty years.
Thank you. Commissioner Meyer.
No conflicts to report.
Thank you, Commissioner Nash. None. Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez.
None.
Thank you, and none for myself. So we'll go ahead and, um, so we'll have our vice chair recuse themselves from item F one, and he will rejoin us back. Once we reach item F two. So we'll go ahead and move into our first public carrying item. A project name, Tat Oxnard LLC doing business as the Artistry Commercial Cannabis Business Retail Special Use Permit. Planning is only permit number twenty one dash five sixteen dash twenty six. A request to permit the operation of a commercial cannabis retail facility within the existing two thousand five hundred and forty six square foot commercial building. On a zero point twenty four acre site located at six hundred North A Street. This is within the general commercial zone proposed. Development includes tenant improvements, installation of interior wall, partitioning, plumbing upgrades, upgrades to an existing fire alarm system, security upgrades to the existing building. Installation of a new secure doors, windows, repainting of the building. And relocation of the loading service doors. Cannabis retail operations will be con- conducted between the hours of nine A M. To nine P M. Daily. This is filed by Lauren Fontaine. And I apologize if I said that wrong. Um, at eleven, three thirty Ventura Boulevard Studio City. On behalf of Tat Oxnard LLC doing business as the Artist Tree. Our city staff person is Jose Cole, Associate Planner. The recommendation is that the planning commission finds the project to be exempt from sequel guideline section fifteen three oh one. Adopted resolution two thousand and twenty one double X approved and planning is only permit number twenty one dash five sixteen dash twenty six special use for my cannabis retail. Subject to certain finance and conditions. As a reminder to my colleagues and members of the public that um. A pre-recorded staff presentation was posted in accordance with measure M on the city's um. Website as well as the YouTube. At this time, I'll go ahead and go to our staff. And ask if they would like to make any additional comments or provide any additional information before we move to our applicant.
Hi, this is Jose Quilt, um, and staff does not have any further comments.
I appreciate that. Um, Mr. Cor, um, does applicant plan on having a presentation this evening?
Yes, Commissioner Chair Chavez, um, the applicant team will be presenting a presentation tonight.
Okay, so if there's no objection from my commissioners, what I would like to do is do what we did last time. Allow the applicant team to go ahead and present, and then we will move into questioning. I do not see any objections to that. So if our applicant team, um, will go ahead, one, introduce themselves and any staff members that they have with them. And our city staff will bring up their presentation.
Hi, I'm Lauren Fontaine, um, one of the founders of the Artistry and one of the owners of the Artistry's upcoming location in Oxnard. So I see our presentation is up, um, and you'll see throughout this presentation, a number of photographs from our existing stores. We included these so you could get an idea of what our store in Oxnard will actually look like on the inside. So a lot of these elements that you're seeing here will be replicated inside our Oxnard store. Next slide, please. Um, the artistry is an art-focused cannabis business. We created this brand in two thousand and eighteen. Because we really wanted to promote artists in the local community. So we have actually been in the cannabis industry going back to two thousand and six. My partners and I, um, have been operating in several licensed medical dispensaries, um, working in cannabis edible manufacturing. Um, and so, you know, we've seen the industry really progress from the medical storefronts. Way back in the day to all of the beautiful designs and very professional companies that you see now. Um, so in two thousand and eighteen, when adult use became legalized. We wanted to create this new brand that was really innovative and fun and welcoming, and that really gave back to the community. And the concept that we came up with was to create stores that were really a hybrid between an art gallery and a cannabis shop. So we have dedicated areas within the store to display art from various local artists. We allow them to do it free of charge, so a hundred percent of the sale proceeds go back to those artists. And we have a variety of exhibits throughout the year, so usually we rotate them every two to three months. So we really give a lot of artists the opportunity to display in the space, and we try and work with artists that are up and coming. We do somehow, sometimes have artists that are more well-known, um, but we really like to give this opportunity to people that might not otherwise have the opportunity to be in a gallery or museum. Um, and get the public exposed to their work. So in addition to promoting the arts. Our goals are also to provide a very inviting and communal shopping experience where people feel safe. And any type of cannabis consumer would feel welcome, whether they're young or old, whether they're experienced or totally new. Um, we really put a lot of emphasis on our employee training so that our staff can give a lot of educational information to the customers that come into our door. Um, and so we really strive to have this very welcoming environment. We have a lot of community service programs, so one of our major goals is to benefit the local community, and I'll talk more about that later. Um, we also want to provide safe access to legal cannabis and to raise awareness of the health benefits of cannabis. Next slide. Our ownership team includes myself, uh, Avi Kayhan and Mitchell Kayhan, who are brothers. Aviv Huini and Kenny Perez are VP of Operations. Um, and as I mentioned. We've all been in the cannabis space for many years, operating licensed stores in the L A area. And then in the past couple of years, we began extending to other cities in California. Next slide. So this map shows our current locations. Um, we have a number of stores in the L A area. As you could see, um, we have a couple of stores about to open in Riverside County and one in Contra Costa County up north. Um, and we did also, after I turned this slide in, learn that we're going to be opening two stores in the city of Fresno. Um, and all stores have the same arts concept, and we are a very hands-on ownership team. So we are directly involved in the operation of all these businesses. Next slide. Um, these are images of our locations. You can see some of the different layouts. Um, we are also going to be opening a consumption lounge in West Hollywood that will be opening in November. Um, and so, as you can see, they're all similar but different, so we don't have this cookie cutter approach where we just go into the city and build the same exact thing. We try and tailor it to the building, to the community, if there's architectural elements that we really want to respect that are already in the building. Um, and so, you know, some of the elements that you see here will be the same as the Oxnard building, but then it'll have also its own local feel. Next slide. So one of the main benefits that we'll be providing to the city is local employment opportunities. Um, we really strive to create quality careers for local residents, so not just jobs. Um, and I'll ask you to go to the next slide. Have some more details on this. Um, so our goal is to have one hundred percent local management and staff, so at a minimum seventy five percent of the employees. Will be residents of Oxnard and hundred percent from Ventura County. Um, and we have detailed plans already in place to work with local employment organizations and nonprofits to really target residents of the city. We don't typically transfer people from our corporate department to be the managers of our different stores. We really try to hire local residents because we know that that will really help us to connect with the community. And so we have them come and train at our other locations, and we have our VP of Operations Kenny Perez. Go onsite to the stores as well as myself and the other owners, um, to support them, but really the whole in-store team is from the local community. Um, we're really proud of our culture of inclusivity and diversity. Our team members span from people of all different backgrounds, ages, um, and we really promote that within the business. We will anticipate having to start with twenty six full-time employees. Um, we do have a living wage, so we're very committed to competitive wages and fair wages for our employees. Which are several dollars above the minimum wage and employee benefits for all employees. We offer a lot of continuing education programs and tuition reimbursement. And we have a track record of promoting from within, so we really try whenever there's a position for manager, some executive level thing. Within the company, we always offer those to people within the company first, and we provide a lot of training and mentorship to. Really prepare our employees for upper-level positions in the company, and that goes even up to equity ownership positions. So we've done in our other locations where people have been able to advance and even had an equity um, ownership stake. In the location. So these are the same types of things that we'll be doing in Oxnard. Next slide. Neighborhood compatibility. So this is something that we know is crucial. And because we've opened stores in different locations, we've had to relocate the stores in L A. We know that it's important to get to know our neighbors and to be good neighbors. Um, so next slide. Um, so we do have a very long track record of being responsible business owners and good neighbors. Um, we have never received complaints in any of our existing locations. Um, we've had a hundred percent compliance record. Um, we really try to create this friendly and warm environment where people feel welcome and where we get to know the community. Because we really do become an everyday part of some people's lives. You know, they're coming in, they're coming in maybe once a week. Um, we get to know the customers. This is one of the fun parts of the job. Um, and so it, it's important that we're reflecting the values of the city of Oxnard, and we know that. Um, we have already done a lot of outreach with the community. I personally have had many conversations with. The heads of the Wilson Neighborhood Council and the Carriage Square Neighborhood Council, which borders our location. Um, I've had conversations with residents. I've had conversations with Carolyn Mullin from the Performing Arts Council. Um, from Jennifer Caldwell from Food Share. Um, and we hosted an open house event a few months ago where we sent mailers out to all of the residents within seven hundred and fifty feet. And we actually had a Zoom open house where, uh, many people attended and asked questions, and we, we did get a lot of positive feedback. And people were excited about having something nearby. Um, and mostly we got comments about how people could apply for jobs or how to submit their artwork for exhibit. We also just recently sent out another mailer, which was with the community workshop information where we provided our direct contact information. Um, and welcomed anyone to contact us with questions about the business. Um, so we're really putting ourselves out there, um, and we want to be able to integrate seamlessly into the community. Um, as part of our being a responsible neighbor, we will be constantly monitoring the areas surrounding our store. Through our onsite security guards to make sure that there's no noise outside, there's no loitering, there's nobody littering. Uh, and so we will be doing that. We have a very large, easily accessible parking lot, so we don't anticipate any traffic issues. Um, and we do have a lobby area that people will have to go through before they can get into the showroom, so. We will not have any queuing of customers outside the facility. Next slide. Um, safety and security are, you know, two things that are very crucial for cannabis businesses, and because we have a lot of experience. We, we have really created these robust protocols to ensure that there's no potential criminal activity onsite. So this is just a, a picture from our West Hollywood store to give you a visual of the pass-through window. So this is in between the cashier area where you would pick up your order. And the fulfillment room where staff would actually be packaging live product. So customers do not have any access to products until they've checked out of the cashier area, and there's. An eight-inch, very narrow pass-through window where then staff can pass their orders and the products will then be transferred to the customers. Next slide. Um, so our security plan includes having licensed guards onsite twenty-four hours a day. So during the operating hours, we would have one to two guards, depending on the time of day and how busy it is. Off-hours, we'll have one guard onsite to monitor the property, who will be stationed primarily inside the storefront. Um, but we'll also monitor the perimeter of the building. We'll be in, uh, installing new safety lighting in the parking area, a video camera surveillance system. Um, and we have strict use access protocols to make sure that there's zero chance that anyone underage could access the facility. We're also going to be enhancing the safety of the building by installing a new fire alarm and sprinkler system. Next slide. Um, so all of our products are stored in one of our two se- secured vault rooms. We don't store live product on the showroom floor. We have dummy packaging that's for display purposes only. And all, if there is any live product, it's behind locked display cases. We have a lot of other security features onsite, including motion detectors, door contact sensors, panic buttons. And many, many security cameras so that every inch of the space is monitored. Next slide. Location. Um, so we're actually very excited about this location. Um, we scouted a lot of potential areas in Oxnard, and this is a standalone building with its own dedicated parking lot. So we have control of the premises, um, which is really nice from just an operations and security standpoint. And we have ample parking for customers, um, and it's a nice-looking building already, so I'll ask you to go to the next slide. So this is the current street view of the building. Um, as you can see, there is a driveway slash alleyway. Up to the left of our building, which is how you would access the parking lot, and you can actually take that all the way to Oxnard Boulevard. Um, so people coming from Oxnard Boulevard could access our store that way, um, again to the parking lot. Um, but it is a standalone building, will be occupying the entire building, and there's fifteen parking spots onsite. And we'll also be installing additional bike parking. Next slide. Um, so this is the before and after. Um, so as you can see, we'll be resurfacing the walls and repainting them. Um, but really maintaining the look of the building, because it actually is a very nice-looking building already. Um, we will be adding exterior security features, and then you'll see there's a mural on the side of the building, so. Um, this is just a mock-up. This isn't the actual. So this is just a mock-up. This isn't the actual mural, and the mural isn't part of this SUP process. But we do hope in the future that we'll be able to get approval from the city to have a mural painted on the outside of the building from a local Oxnard artist. Next slide. This is the site plan. So you can see the, all the details of the parking area in the rear of the building. The main entrance of the building is in the front on East Street. There is a rear entrance, which will only be used by vendors delivering product or our delivery drivers or armored car pickups. So that way, none of those things will happen within the purview of customers. Those will all happen in the secured back area, and all the customers will come through the front door. Next slide. Community benefits. So this is something that is near and dear to my heart, and I work directly on a lot of our community benefits programs. And this image is actually a food drive that we did for Food Share Ventura County last December. They have a can tree event where organizations can build these Christmas trees out of cans and donate the cans. And because of COVID, we participated remotely last year. So we made the tree in our West Hollywood store and then donated the items to Food Share. We then transported them there. So this is something we're excited about doing every year. And I'll have you go to the next slide. So Oxnard, as you know, has a requirement of us contributing 1% of gross receipts to the city and the payment upfront. But we also have committed an additional 1% of gross profits, of gross revenue, which totals over $100,000 every year to support our own community benefits efforts. So this includes, one, having the arts space in our building, so you know, the curatorial fees, installing the artwork, hosting exhibits, two, providing direct funding to different city community organizations and nonprofits. So whether it's sponsoring arts education or programming at the Performing Arts Center or giving funding to other nonprofits. We'll also host donation drives throughout the year where we collect canned food items. We've collected clothing or like Toys for Tots programs. And we encourage our customers to participate in those programs by giving them discounts at the store, which has been really effective. We've gotten, you know, a lot of donation items. So that's been a really successful way to help local charities. And then another thing that we do to encourage people to enjoy the local arts is if you have a ticket stub from an event or a performance space or a museum in the area, we actually give you 10% off your purchase for the day. So that kind of encourages our customers to support other events and programming that are happening in the community. Next slide, which I think is the last slide. So thank you for listening to that summary, and I look forward to answering any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fontaine, for the presentation. We'll now move to our commissioners. This is an opportunity for commissioners to ask any questions of either staff or the applicant team. As a reminder, when directing your questions, please clearly state who you're directing it towards, whether it's staff or the applicant. Commissioners. Commissioner Connelly.
Thank you for that amazing presentation, Lauren. And I just want to apologize in advance. I feel like the more and more presentations we get, the harder questions come up. So I know I was asking easy questions in the beginning, and now I've kind of got a little more creative. So first, do you have a public restroom in your facility?
We do not. So the restroom is in the back of house, which would only be used by our employees.
Okay, perfect. And then, so when it comes to long-term plans, like what's your lease length? Or what's your goal long-term on how you, how long you guys plan to stay in this location?
I mean, we want to be there forever. I don't, I know probably our initial lease is five years with several extension options. I don't know exactly how many of those. I can't remember. But, but you know, our plan is to really be, we love this space. It's a great building. We're going to put a lot of money into the build-out. So, you know, we're going in with the intention of staying there and, you know, hopefully being an asset to the community.
Perfect. And then, I know a lot of us have like safety and security questions, just because this is so new. So I know everyone's been focused on that no minors will be in the building. So is it very different than like a liquor store where you could bring your minor child in? They would hold your hand, not touch anything, and then make a purchase? Or is it no, no minors whatsoever, even a baby in a stroller to pick up a purchase? Or how does that work?
It's no minors can enter the door of our facility. So you have to be 21 with proof of ID or 18, even if you're not purchasing. So you know, if you have a friend with you, they cannot wait there in the lobby. I have three children, and my daughter's always saying, "Why can't I go to your store? Why can't I revisit it?" And they're not legally allowed by state law to be on the premises at all if you're under the age of, like I said, 21 or 18 with medical documentation.
Perfect. So people that are over the age of 18 could have like a medical card and they would be able to go in and purchase?
Correct.
Okay, I was not aware of that. And then, so what, so it kind of looks like from your pictures that it is going to be, look like a, like an art studio. So is there signage on the front door that says no persons under 21 will be admitted?
Yes, there is. So we have signs that are kind of standard that we put as signs about no loitering, no consumption onsite. You must be 21 or 18 with a valid medical patient to enter. So that will be posted outside of the building.
Perfect. And then I know a lot of our other applicants, as well as yourself, have really focused on supporting local charities and local employment. But have you considered like local banking? Or I'm not sure if we have local vendors that supply cannabis products? Has that come into your business plan at all, is using local vendors?
Yes, it has. So as part of the application process, we had some information about product procurement and working with local suppliers. And so we really do try to do that. There's many cultivators in Santa Barbara County and areas around there. And so we do definitely try to support not just the main known brands that, you know, maybe every store carries, but also to find some smaller brands that maybe are looking for, you know, a place to sell, and they're not in any stores. So we do take that into consideration. And we also have a house flower brand. And so for that one, we also like to, for each different regional store, work with a cultivator that's nearby so that we can really highlight local products and, you know, support shopping locally and customers like that as well.
Perfect. Thank you. That concludes my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Connelly. Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Welcome to Oxnard. Ms. Fontaine?
Ms. Fontaine.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Okay, welcome to Oxnard. Just have a couple of questions. The, just wanted, sort of curious, what your process was for finding your location that you chose?
So we, you know, looked for places. We knew we wanted something of a certain square footage. So we generally want at least 2,000 square feet. This one's about 2,500. We look for adequate parking. I personally am not the person that finds the properties on our team. But one of our, one of my partners, his wife, Caitlin White, is one of the co-owner. She's a minority owner of this project. He, they knew the owner of this property, so they had a connection to the owner of this property in particular, and his current tenants, their lease was ending. And so that's how we found this property. And we did look at a number of different options within the city before the application process started. But like I said, this is actually a really nice property because it's hard sometimes to find standalone buildings and buildings with their own parking lots.
Yeah, I agree with you on that because it's, you know, the whole area is the downtown area. So obviously, once upon a time, you know, it was, they used to even go, you know, on weekends, you know, and go, you know, riding up and up, up and down Eighth Street on Sundays and things like that. And it's been a while now, but you know, just, just thinking that, you know, just, you know, getting businesses in that location like yours could, you know, begin a renaissance, you know, as far as bringing back A Street and A Street itself and just the downtown. And, you know, it looks like there's a potential you might be able to help with that with your business, just bringing people, more people into downtown, because, you know, it's over a couple of decades where we didn't have much. Excuse me?
I just want to remind you that we're in the questions. If you want to save those comments for once we enter deliberation, that would be the appropriate time. Right now it's just for questions.
Okay, we'll just have one more, and that'll be it.
Please continue.
Thank you. So bike rack racks, was that your idea? That's unusual because, you know, everybody drives. So where did the idea of bike racks come from?
So we do like to encourage people to travel by more eco-friendly methods. We do have people in our other locations in LA that are biking in. And so we thought it would be nice to actually have a space for that, whether it's employees that want to use it or the customers. So we have a designated space in our site plans in the, behind the building, which is in the parking lot area where we'll install bike rack.
Yeah, we all need to do more walking, I'd say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez, for your questions. Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. Thank you, Ms. Fontaine, for the presentation. That was very helpful, especially the visuals to give us a sense of what the operation looked like when the build-out is complete. I just had a couple of questions. One was the format of how the product is delivered to the customer. So I hadn't seen before a situation where the product was behind a wall with just kind of that eight-inch gap. So when the, when the customers are considering what to purchase, is there, is there anything that's available to the bartenders as far as to show them for closer inspection or to compare products or items? How does that work in your operation?
So we have, the showroom will have an open floor plan, and every product that we sell is on display. But the display packaging for much of it is dummy packaging. So it may have a bag of edibles where there's even wrapped candies inside with their vape. Or it will be vape cartridges, but there's not oil in them. So customers can look at the packaging, they can read the ingredients, they can see what they're getting. And we do have some products like concentrates that are behind locked glass. So they are actually visually, people could see what they look like, but they're underneath locked glass cases. So in some of the pictures, there was some cases, and those are locked. So only employees would be able to open them. And then we do have the flower. We do have little samples that are in these small containers. So people can see it up close and actually smell it as well. But they're tethered to the tables, and so it would be very hard for someone to remove that. And it's only a very small amount that's out there for display.
Oh, great, great. That helps me understand how it all works. Thank you. Some other question was around labor. Do you, I didn't recall you mentioned anything about having like a labor agreement or how you're managing that. Do you have a union affiliation at this store or with any stores?
So we do have a labor peace agreement already pre-negotiated with the Teamsters, and we are planning to sign that as soon as we are about to be hiring or hiring our first employees.
Got it, okay. I was familiar with a lot of agreements with UFCW, but in this case, Teamsters. So that's interesting. I hadn't.
Yeah, so we started working with them with our West Hollywood location because we are part of a trade group of some other businesses in West Hollywood. And so we also, we began working with the Teamsters, who also are working with some cannabis businesses.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful. I've noticed, I think, most, I'm not sure if all of the applicants so far have had project labor agreements. So that's very encouraging. And I was looking to see, you know, if that would be something that would actually be a difference-maker between operations or not. But it looks like it's a very, very much common practice with the operations that are coming forward to us. So thank you for that clarification. That's all my questions.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer, for your comments. Any additional questions? Commissioner Connelly.
I have one further question. This may be for Counsel Mr. Rozell. After our last meeting, it just got me thinking about like local banking, and that's why I asked our applicant about it. But on a legal level, since cannabis isn't federally approved, can federal banks be like a business banker for a cannabis retailer? Or would a local, would a local bank be what they would choose?
Yes, happy to answer that. Based on my understanding of the law at this time, federally chartered banks cannot accept cannabis money. There are certain credit unions that do provide that service. And I know there is legislation that has been considered, both on the state and national level, or, and also potential changes in banking regulations to allow that. But at this point in time, it is difficult to find places which will accept the cash. Ms. Fontaine can probably provide a little more information on that point. But they definitely cannot go to federally chartered banks such as Wells Fargo, Bank of America, et cetera.
Perfect. Thank you for that clarification.
I'll just add, yeah, so exactly what you just said, we cannot go to B of A or Wells Fargo. But so right now, we bank with a federal credit union called GAIN Credit Union, which is based in Burbank. And they have become a dedicated cannabis banking provider to a number of cannabis businesses. So if there were another local bank or credit union in the Oxnard area or Ventura County area, we would be open to working with them because we, you know, have to work with more of a smaller provider. But fortunately, the credit union that we work with has been able to provide all the same services that a normal business could get at one of those federal banks. So we are able to, you know, deposit all of our cash there and take debit card payments and do those types of things.
Thank you, Ms. Fontaine, and thank you, Commissioner Connelly, for your comments, your questions. Are there any additional questions from the commission? I just have a few, Ms. Fontaine. You mentioned that there was community outreach efforts. You had an open house that was virtually. Did you have communications with the businesses in the area and the neighborhoods? And what were those feedbacks? Positive, negative, you know, just curiosity?
Yeah, so we, when we sent our mailers for the invitations to the open house event, and just recently, we sent another one. We sent it to residents and to businesses. And so we did get some comments from some of them, but we didn't get any negative comments. We were actually really pleasantly surprised that the community of Oxnard and our neighborhood seems to be very open to this and open to, as one of the commissioners mentioned, having some life and blood in this little neighborhood and having, you know, maybe attracting more traffic to their businesses. So they were happy that some, something new was coming in, something that would drive traffic to the area. You know, it is actually a benefit to local businesses normally when a cannabis business is nearby because they have so much security. That becomes a deterrent to any criminal activity to our neighbors as well. And so I think once we explained, you know, our experience and our plans, they felt very comfortable with us entering the neighborhood.
Thank you for that. Your security plan, you mentioned that it was going to be a 24 hours onsite. So there'll be a security officer there during the off operations. Will they be in a mark unit, an unmark unit, patrols around the building? You know, how, without getting into too much detail, risking the security. But can you provide just a little bit of detail about that for the after-hours?
Sure. So normally, they're positioned right inside the entryway to the building where they have a view of the exterior. And they have camera footage that shows all the different rooms of the facility at the same time. And they also will patrol the parking area or the street front, but they would be able to see those. But they would be able to see those areas remotely to, you know, hopefully catch anything before it were to happen. But they are, they are primarily positioned on the interior of the building.
This would be after hours. So after 9:00 P.M., you'll have a security officer in the lobby area viewing cameras, doing patrols periodically.
Yes.
Okay, that's different. But all right. The one of the slides that you had listed a lot of locations in L.A. County. Now, L.A. County has different standards than the city of Oxnard providing as far as how the store layout is and what is allowed to be displayed and what isn't. Are you okay with that? And what do you see your challenges being with that?
So we have adapted these plans to Oxnard specifically. So for instance, in L.A., they don't require a lobby. A store can just have a check-in desk when you enter and you still have to get ID, but you can see the whole showroom. Oxnard wanted to have a lobby, which we're happy to do. So our four plans for Oxnard have a designated lobby waiting room where people first are positioned there before they have access and it's a buzz in to the showroom. So that's another added layer of security. I'm trying to think if there's any other specific security or differences in the Oxnard code, but there's something. So I'm an attorney, so I'm kind of, you know, an expert on cannabis compliance at this point. I also write our applications. So I look very closely at what's required to make sure that we're, including in our plans with that, when we're also actually operating, that we're really following all the rules. Another thing Oxnard has that's different is they require all employees to get a work permit and background check through the city. So that's not something that L.A. or West Hollywood require, but something that we are happy to comply with. So all of our employees, you will actually have background checks on them and you'll be able to see. Someone had actually asked in another planning commission meeting about how you could police the businesses to make sure they're hiring at least 75% Oxnard residents. And because you have that program in place and you'll be doing background checks and having to authorize all the employees, you'll actually have that data very readily available. So you'll be able to see if, you know, stores are having employees that reside outside of the city. You'll actually be able to see exactly how many people at each store live where, which is kind of nice from your perspective. That was just something that occurred to me the other day. But so these are just examples. But, you know, we have to tailor every store to the local rules and we're happy to do that and we're used to doing that. And so we've taken that into account.
I appreciate that. Now, because the the whole concept is like kind of art studio and retail dispensary. Are there any like art shows that occur after hours? And if so, how does that work with the products on the floor?
So because we're a licensed cannabis business, we're not able to be open to the public after hours. So state laws, 10:00 P.M., but in Oxnard, it's 9:00 P.M. closing time. So we can't have anybody on the premises after 9:00 P.M. unless it's an employee, you know, doing work. So we aren't unfortunately able to host anything outside of operating hours. So if we do have events, which we do, it's all during the time when the store would be allowed to be open for business. And we can have private events, but would have to be during those hours.
Now, what happens to the product? Because I know you say you have a very limited amount of actual product on the floor. Is that stored away during the events? How does that work?
So if we had an event, I mean, we would still be capped at whatever occupancy limit is for the space. So it's not like we get hundreds of people packed in there. And we normally would have extra security onsite. The product is very secure already as it is normally displayed. We have had, we did have a big launch event in West Hollywood. But we, you know, felt safe about everything because there's really only those little samples of flour and these tethered boxes and things behind lock cases. And so, you know, we're aware, you know, we will have extra guards onsite. But we feel safe about having, you know, more people in the store at a given time.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Swenson, just a couple of questions for our staff. The crime in this area, where what what level is it at? Low, moderate, high?
My last recollection is it's moderate. It doesn't raise any great concerns. The residential area is is got a pretty low crime rate.
Okay. All right. I appreciate that. Thank you. Any additional questions from our commission? Seeing and hearing none. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing portion for this item. Double check. Madam Secretary, just to confirm, we do not have any public comment speakers for this item, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for this item. We'll go to staff if they have any final comments that they want to provide. And then we'll allow the applicant to provide any final comments before the commission moves into deliberation.
Staff does not have any further comments.
Thank you for that, Ms. Fontaine. Any final comments before the commission moves into deliberation?
No, I just want to say thank you to the city and city city staff for being very helpful and very efficient with this process. It seems clear the city is trying to facilitate businesses opening and we are very excited to get open quickly. And so, I mean, we can tell having dealt with other municipalities. It's been a smooth process so far with the city. And we really are excited about coming to North A Street and hopefully creating this fun destination for people to stop by. So thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Commissioners will now move into deliberation. Who would like to go first? Commissioner Conley?
I just want to say this, this was an interesting one that I weaved through. It's about a half a mile from my house. So I I love, sorry, I'm getting over a cold. I love downtown Oxnard. And when I think about the Oxnard revitalization, I think of restaurants and breweries and cannabis definitely wasn't in my idea of downtown Oxnard. But I think your presentation was great. And as everyone here and the applicant probably knows, you're within walking distance from the train station. The Pacific Surf liner stops in Oxnard all the time. So I think that maybe we could get some out of town people stopping in to see, see what's down here and have a good time in downtown Oxnard. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Conley. Any additional comments? Commissioner Meyer?
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I appreciate the different take that this applicant has on the storefront, the the artist aspect, the above and beyond approach to giving that extra 1%. And I think it adds to the diversity of not only the types of cannabis dispensaries that we are approving here, but also locations. It's nice that we don't have a a concentration developing, at least at this point. And I think that having that local access for a variety of different neighborhoods is a real plus. I definitely will be supporting this application.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer. Any additional comments? Commissioner Nash?
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I think that this combination of a dispensary with sort of a an art an art display space is absolutely appropriate for, you know, my vision of downtown. I'm excited about the about the possibilities. You know, this will be a incubator, I think. It will drive business to this area. It's amazing that we're, you know, on our fourth dispensary now. And the presentations just seem to be getting better and better. So you know, practice makes perfect, I I guess. I I really did not have any questions. My only ask of 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 the staff is because the the staff reports tend to, you know, they tend to be very similar to to one another. And I do feel bad about chewing up so many trees to provide, to to provide me a hard copy. If if there is any way to condense the the staff reports that you know, I know that there are conditions of approval that vary from location to location. But for the rest of the boilerplate, you know, if we can just sort of eliminate that moving forward, because we do have, by my count, you know, 12 more permits coming up. So that that's, you know, that's just an idea. I want to throw it to staff. I I I don't need the the complete repetition from permit to permit. So having said that, I I I don't know if if there are anymore to the root of comments, but I'm I'm happy to move the recommend, the recommended action.
Okay. Is there any additional comments? I'll just say, Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I think this does, this business will help to transform that area. It's been a long time. You know, that, you know, so along the freeway, you know, you get a lot of attention, but in the downtown, not so much. So bringing actually retail such as yours will help to revitalize, revitalize the area of you know, downtown Oxnard. It's, it needs some work and I think your business will be one that will help in that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. I'll just make a few quick questions, since Commissioner Nash did throw out the motion. I I think I like the concept. Art and cannabis, you know, you're allowing local artists to be able to display their art. And they get to receive 100% of the proceeds. I think that's amazing. And then, you know, after somebody goes and do their shopping at the store, they can go on the other side of the street, right there in Oxnard Boulevard, and have a nice Italian dinner at Dominique's. So there's a lot of pros for this. And as mentioned by one of my colleagues is that it is kind of getting harder to try to find questions because with each presentation, it's getting better and better. And I kind of look at it and hope that other businesses, industries, look at what this industry is doing when they are providing tuition reimbursement, they're providing benefits. They're going above the living wage when they're paying their employees. Those are all pros that keep up with modern times. So I appreciate the presentation. I appreciate the concept. I think it's a great concept. And I can support this as well. If there's no further comments, I will go ahead and second Commissioner Nash's motion for approval. So it's been moved and seconded to approve the application. It's been moved and seconded for the project name Tax Oxnard LLC Doing Business as the Artistry Commercial Cannabis Business Retail Special Use Permit. Planning and zoning permit number 21-516-26. Recommendation that define the project to be categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to sequel guideline section 150301. Existing facilities and adopt the resolution 2021 double X approved planning and zoning permit number 21-516-26. Special use for made cannabis retail subject to certain findings and conditions. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing and hearing none. Madam Secretary, if we can have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Nash?
Before I cast my vote, I I want to thank Chair Chavez for mentioning one of our fine restaurants. And I hope that the applicant and all of their staff patronize all of the fine restaurants we have downtown. So having said that, my my vote is aye.
Chair Chavez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ojoe? Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you for that. And congratulations, Ms. Fontaine. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move into our next public hearing item. And we welcome our vice chair back. Project name is City of Oxnard 2021 to 2029 Final Housing Element Planning and Zoning Zoning Permit Number 20-620-03 General Plan Amendment. And this is actually a large item. This is actually part two of our September 2nd, 2021 meeting. This is an action item. And I will actually like to recognize Director Adam Midas from our community development. If you would like to go ahead and summarize this item before we move into the staff's comments.
Good evening, Chair Chavez and members of the city's planning commission. It's a pleasure to be here with you again. This is our second meeting with the planning commission on this important item of the city's housing element. Ms. Kathleen Mallory will be leading this discussion with our consultant team. And I believe she is present in the chambers there, hopefully.
Thank you, Director Adam Midas. I wanted to first just acknowledge the team that's on here with us tonight to support this. We have Heather Davis with Ringcon Consultants, who's the assistant project manager on this. We've also got Amy Sinseimer with Placeworks here joining us. And Emilio Ramirez, our housing director, is getting kicked on and off, but he should be on any minute. So we can also lean on him if there are any questions this evening. And of course, our our great director. So this is step two of advancing the work on this. And this is an exciting evening tonight. A lot of hard work, a lot of work from many people supporting this effort. As was mentioned, we have the final housing element along with a review of the ordinances that, well, we'll cover briefly in introductory remarks. We also have the initial study and mitigated negative declaration. And then finally, the commission's action this evening is to make a recommendation on these items to the city council. It was a busy afternoon, as you saw. There was a series of memos that were issued this morning. And then a number of letters that you may have seen in that packet and then also a letter from a housing advocate group. So I wanted to just briefly cover some of that this evening. In terms of the sites, since the, since for a few months, but actively since September 2nd and then up, leading up to this meeting, we've hosted a number of or fielded a number of comments regarding housing element sites. A number of phone calls and a number of written responses to questions regarding sites. The written responses are in your packet and you can see how we've responded to them. It's important to note that this is the culmination of a very long process. This is also the beginning of a process, and that is the implementation of the programs that you see in the housing element. Those programs include a no net loss provision, a no net loss program elements within program three. Many of the sites that we said no to right now because of the late hit on them, that that does not mean that we're going to lose those sites. It means that we keep track of them. We evaluate them for compliance with the state of California's requirements for sites inventory. So not all sites can just be put into the housing element. There's a very robust process that you have to go through to identify them and inventory them. So by the sheer nature of the document you have before you that has been reviewed by the state already, we can't just add sites to that, the list before you in supplement one. And that's because you have to justify sites with a whole series of information. So while we can't add them at this time, we do appreciate the requests and the information that we've received. We'll keep that. And as we go through our cycle over the next eight years, and then specifically every year through the annual report, if we lose affordable housing sites, we have to add. we have to add sites back in within a timeframe stipulated by law. So we can add these sites back in as we need to. And there's nothing to stop these property owners from making a request to build affordable, affordable housing on these sites, independent of our housing element process. I also wanted to outline a couple of changes, um, that we have presented in a memo today to the planning commission. As you remember, on September 2nd, we provided a very detailed summary of the ordinance changes. We walked through in quite a lot of detail and, and process why we created different regulations. And we outlined them for the commission. And then even in the September 16th packet before you this evening, we provided responses for why we didn't make certain edits and our professional recommendations for that. To make it easier for, uh, the commission, because some of these ordinances are a bit complex. For example, the additive zone, um, attachment four A in your packet. I've asked Heather, following my introductory mark, remarks, to give a brief, very brief summary of the site plan review process and the additive zone process. And then to explain the three specific changes that are articulated in the memo to you. I think that will help as we go forward with answering, answering questions on those two ordinances and then the memo this afternoon specifically. We also received a letter to very late this afternoon, which was forwarded to the commission from a housing advocate regarding changes that she would recommend to certain sections of the additive zone regulations. And she cited concerns over the Housing Accountability Act. Our recommendation is to leave the additive zone regulations for projects with more than 15% mixed use affordable housing as is, leave that process as is, as you see it currently in the memo within chapter six, uh, section 16, 420 C and B. And really one of the main reasons why is because those are new sites. Those are affordable housing discretionary sites. And those sites are in some instances adjacent to, uh, industrial or BRP. And so it is appropriate to leave that special use permit provision in place, uh, in light of these being new sites. And also that the process and definitions that, that are recommended to be changed pursuant to that letter as well. That is, the definitions in that ordinance pertain to all types of housing, not just 100% affordable or uh, greater than 20% affordable. It, it, it applies, the definitions in that ordinance, the additive zone ordinance applies to all types of projects and all types that may be requested now and in the future. And then finally, I wanted to just turn it over now to Heather Davis. And as I mentioned, she'll briefly summarize the site plan review and additive ordinances and then walk through some examples of the changes, um, to those, uh, uh, three items that we articulated in our memo this afternoon. So with that, I'll, I'll turn this over to Heather Davis.
Uh, thank you Kathleen and good evening, commission. So there are the two new ordinance that are proposed concurrently with the housing element to accommodate rezoning the sites on supplement one of the housing element. Um, to allow the state default density of 30 dwelling units per acre for multifamily development with affordable housing. The affordable housing additive zone, so these two zones, uh, ordinances are the affordable housing AHP and AHD additive zone, uh, ordinance and the site plan review ordinance. The affordable housing additive zone ordinance replaces the city's existing affordable housing opportunity program, also known as AHOPE. The ordinance creates two affordable housing additive zones. The affordable housing permitted, which is AHP, which will be placed on the former AHOPE sites and will allow by right development approval for multifamily with affordable housing. And the other, um, zone is the affordable housing discretionary or AHD, uh, which will be on the new housing element sites and will require, sorry, um, a, uh, hang on, um. I apologize, will require a special use permit. Um, so these sites are not subject to the by right requirement and can be reviewed as discretionary. Since many of the sites are on industrially zoned parcels, um, either BRP or limited, limited manufacturing, um, which will be rezoned to commercial, uh, the site, the specific use permit was determined to be the appropriate approval process to assure compatibility with surrounding uses. Both of these zones allow multifamily development on top of the underlying zone, which are predominantly the C2 and the BRP and require a minimum of 20% of the units be restricted as affordable to lower income households. The ordinance references the city's R4 development standards and includes objective design standards and findings. The new additive zone ordinance is based on the retiring AHOPE ordinance, but provides a more robust affordable housing program. The new ordinance may be used by market rate developers that include 20% of the units as affordable, uh, which is intended to result in more housing development than under the AHOPE program. The ordinance also includes an incentive to encourage 100% affordable projects, specifically the 10% adjustment to numerical development standards such as setbacks and lot coverage. The state housing element law does not require the city to provide the adjustments to, to development standards. However, this represents a reasonable incentive. The, uh, the feature helps to reduce project costs for affordable housing developers since developers can use the adjustment to, um, adjustment and reserve their density bonus concession for larger development standards. The state density bonus provides parking reductions and up to four concessions for 100% affordable projects, uh, which can be coupled with these adjustments. The other ordinance is the site plan review. To accommodate by right development on the AHP sites, the new site plan review ordinance outlines a process, process for streamlined and simplified ministerial review. The director will be the review authority for site plan review to ensure compliance with objective development standards and design standards. The, the developments will also be reviewed by the Development Advisory Committee for consistency with objective state and local standards to provide an inter-agency perspective and coordination with the goal of streamlining the development and building permit process. Specialists can, um, may and can be brought in from other agencies, uh, such as the Ventura County Air Pollution Control District to review toxic lists, um, and to provide other expertise. Uh, to comply with the state definition of by right, the SPR process, site plan review, uh, is non-discretionary, which means the public agency must act on a development using fixed standards and the agency can use a discretionary judgment. Cannot use, sorry. Therefore, the site plan review does not, um, include public meetings or hearings. However, in response to the planning commission input, the site plan review permit will be identified on the city's development project list. Uh, this evening, the commission received a memo, uh, that recommended three modifications to the additive zone ordinance that came about after the planning commission packets went out. I'll review through them briefly. The first modification was in addition to the ordinance to codify a provision that the community services, public safety, housing and development committee added to program five of the housing element at their July 27th meeting. The new section waives the lot merge fees for housing element sites that include at least one parcel smaller than half an acre. Uh, the second modification clarifies the permitting for mixed use development. So this section addresses three scenarios. Um, these are all under the section B in the memo. Um, the first allows for mixed use with only, that are up to 15% of the use as commercial to be treated the same as multifamily with either, um, an SPR or site plan review for the AHP sites or a special use permit for the AHD sites. It also requires a special use permit for a commercial use if an SUP is required, uh, in the underlying zone, such as for a bar on the first floor. The 50%, 15% is from the California Environmental Quality Act, which aligns with the ministerial review for exempt multifamily development. The second scenario is for commercial use that exceeds 15% in the AHP zone. Multi, the multifamily development would then be required to obtain a development design review permit. Now, commercial or office space, uh, would require a development design review permit or a special use permit, uh, depending on the underlying zone. And, um, finally, a scenario, um, for a commercial use that exceeds 15% in the AHD zone. So that's the difference between the, uh, part two and part three. The part two only applied to AHP and part three applies to AHD. A, a special use permit would still be required for multifamily, but this provision would allow for retail development sep, that's developed separately to be reviewed, um, per the underlying zone. So under some circumstances, a DDR could still be, um, a possibility on those sites. The third modification in the, um, memo, uh, specifies that the planned development on a site is applicable to non-residential development on a site. The intent of this addition is to avoid internal inconsistency that would require by right development to obtain a discretionary special use permit for development in the PD zone. It also clarifies that a PD and an additive zone provision cannot be utilized on the same application. I'll now turn the mic back over to Kathleen.
Thank you, Heather. Um, great job of summarizing some real complex information. We are, we're, we're having some difficulties with technology on our end, imagine that. Um, so I'm, I'm filling, I'm filling the time here for a moment. Until we're, uh, so let me just, um, advise then this is a recommendation to the city council, which will be for the October 5th, uh, city council meeting. And the action and input from the planning commission this evening would be summarized into the, uh, October 5th staff report. How are we doing? Okay. So we'll have, um, just so to explain to the commission, we are having difficulty, um, letting one of our staff members in, um, the director, Amelia Ramirez, but he'll be able to participate, but only via phone. So you can see him there. You won't be able to get, see his great face. So with that, um, I think this concludes, uh, concludes our, uh, presentation and, um, our summary of the, of the changes and we're available to, um, begin to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mallory and staff for the, the quick summary presentation and rundown. Commissioners, do we have any questions, um, of staff at this time? And Vice Chair Reckel?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I have at least two questions on for staff. Um, I'll say the topics because they're unrelated. Um, the first has to deal with the site plan review ordinance specifically, uh, 16-523.7 and the second has to deal with, um, the memo, uh, attached, um, from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. In regards to my first question, um, if, again, 16-523.7 expiration date and extension. Um, in section A, uh, I was trying to find the reasoning why, um, the extension for the expiration of the site plan review, um, went from 24 to 36. And, um, in regards to, uh, my second question, um, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife recommended several mitigation me, measures or recommendations. And the briefing presentation, um, it was commented that it was not as significant as the other memos, um, because Oxnard was in an urban environment. And I was wondering, um, will these be implemented even if they're deemed not as significant where possible or needed? And if so, how and when would that happen? Um, and I'm happy to repeat my questions, uh, to any staff member that can answer that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you, Commissioner. I believe I, I got the, the questions, really two main questions. So the first is, why go from 24 to 36 months? Um, we had that discussion with our affordable housing advocates. And oftentimes coupling money together and different funding sources takes time. And so we felt this was, uh, supportive of affordable housing to extend it, um, to, from 24 to 36 to put that, um, to provide for the opportunity to couple money more efficiently and to give them, uh, more time to be, to be able to do that. The second is regarding fish and wildlife. I believe the question was, uh, will they be implemented when and how? And yes, those additional mitigation measures will be included on conditions of approval for those projects that, uh, where, where those conditions apply. I hope that answers your questions.
Thank you. It, um, it, it mostly does. And I'll ask a follow-up actually of council in regards to number one. Are, is the planning commission, I'd just like to confirm, are they able to make an amendment, um, to the ordinances as presented to the planning commission, um, for presentation to the city council if they are approved?
Yes, the planning commission, uh, with the majority vote can make a recommended change, um, in one of the ordinances for you tonight. And those recommendations would then be forwarded to the city council for they, for their consideration, which would indicate to the, the city council what the planning commission's recommend, recommended changes were.
Uh, thank you for that, um, confirmation. And thank you, Chair. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reckel. Any additional questions from the commission? Seeing and hearing none. Um, I'll go ahead and open the, the public hearing portion of this item and receive the public input, um, from the public. So we'll go ahead and move to our first person, uh, Mark Pettit. Sir Pettit, you will have three minutes.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, good evening, Chair, planning commissioners. My name is Mark Pettit and I'm an architect with Lauterbach and Associates Architects in Oxnard. Uh, we wanted to compliment staff, especially Kathleen for her outreach and hard work to put together this, uh, comprehensive document that we think will serve Oxnard well, um, in providing, uh, much needed housing for all of Oxnard residents. So my comments tonight are, are focused more on the affordable housing, uh, standards and what can be done to make housing more cost effective and of course more attractive. There are several development standards that I wanted to talk about and we reviewed these in relationship to eight recent projects and four projects that are under process. And in particular, per section 16, 420G development standards, letter E, it suggests a 10% deviation and we would like to see that increase to maybe as much as 25. For example, a patio dimension is 10 feet. A deviation of 10% is one foot. So, uh, maybe if it's 25, that could be, uh, reduced. The second section is, uh, 16420H, the design standards. Letter A, number one. We agree with parking lot areas, garages and carports, uh, be behind structures. But with standards that, uh, we have parking standards, there, they have to be, parking spaces have to be within a certain distance of the residential units. And this is just not going to happen when we have this type of a requirement. So developers will probably use a concession. Similarly, in A8, uh, not having parking structures within 75 feet, is just not feasible. Parking structures could be carports, there could be garages. And it's, it's just not very clear. Uh, the city has a code that says all the parking is screened by little walls and landscape or hedge up to 42 inches. So why is that not acceptable and the other one is? The next item that I have is underneath D, site design number six. No bedrooms. No bedrooms to face the public right-of-way. Often when we have apartments, they are only able to have windows on one side of the apartment and
On thirty seconds left.
That's where you put the windows for bedrooms and living rooms. So I'm not sure that that is a very functional, reasonable, and developers will use a concession. The last item is item E, accessory elements, refuse enclosures. I think it's just too too close and should be expanded to two hundred feet. And I think trash enclosure can cost between twenty-five and forty thousand dollars. So the least amount of those, the better for putting that money back into housing. Thank you very much for listening to me tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit, for your your comments this evening. Our next speaker will be, and I apologize, Sukai Sandu.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes.
Yes, sir. My name is Sukhi Sandhu. I'm owner of two lots on C Street, twelve twenty-seven and twelve thirty-nine. Those lots are, my lot is located in the middle of high-density apartment buildings. And I like, there's a need for housing in the area, state-wise, also in city of Oxnard. I like to consider my two lots for high density is almost close to an acre. And I like to develop them into a high-density rather than a low-density or medium-density which is which is designated now. You know, big homes in the middle of apartments won't serve the purpose and won't solve the housing needs. So I seriously request you guys to consider my two lots on twelve twenty-seven and twelve thirty-nine South C Street for high-density development. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We'll go ahead and move to our next speaker, Paul Shan.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Chair Chavez, members of the planning commission, city staff. I will be brief. My name is Paul Shan. I'm a local architect, and I've been providing development land use and entitlement consulting services in Oxnard and throughout Ventura County for more than four decades. I've had the honor of participating in many of the public meetings related to the housing element update and the companion general plan and zoning ordinance modifications. I found the process to be exceptionally transparent with city staff highly proactive, both in seeking and responding to the wide variety of comments and concerns expressed by the various stakeholders and the public in general. I want to again take this opportunity to both thank and commend city staff and its consultants, particularly Kathleen Mallory and Scott Colwitz and Heather Davis from Rincon Consultants for their ongoing professionalism and dedication to this process. While no plan is perfect, the proposal before you this evening is comprehensive and very well-done. I fully support the twenty-twenty-one twenty-nine housing element and the corresponding revisions to the general plan land use settlement and the amendments to the city zoning code and map. And I strongly urge the planning commission to support all of this good work this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shan, for your your comments. We'll go to our next speaker, Nathaniel Levy. Mr. Levy, you can press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, hello, everybody. My name is Nathaniel Levy. I'm working with Levy Affiliated Holdings on the project off of Ives and Oxnard Boulevard or on Ives and Jones. It's about a two-point-nine acre lot. It's currently in the overlay ordinance, zoned for high-density thirty per acre. I'd just like to say that I support the overlay ordinance and that there is a housing shortage in in the city of Oxnard and that we'd like to kind of help come in and develop affordable housing in the area to kind of meet some of the the demand needs. And yes, thank you, everyone. Thank you to Heather and Kathleen for all your help. And look forward to hopefully getting this passed.
Thank you, Mr. Levy, for your comments. We'll go ahead and move to our next speaker, Barbara Macri Ortiz.
Good evening, Chair Chavez and commissioners. My name is Barbara Macri Ortiz. I'm a thirty-two-year Oxnard resident and an affordable housing attorney. I assume that you received the letter that I sent this afternoon. It raises specific concerns with division F, seven C, the Affordable Housing AHP and AHD Additive Zones. I will not repeat what is in the letter, but I am available for any con- any questions you may have for me in that regard. I would like to say that I have been involved in the housing element process in Oxnard for all the housing element cycles since nineteen ninety. And I can honestly say that the process this year was the best I have experienced. I wish to thank Kathleen Mallory and her team for engaging the affordable housing community and listening to what we have had to say. I'm not saying that there is agreement on everything, but I think we have a good starting point to move affordable housing objectives forward in our city for the next eight years. But there will be issues. There will be issues with suitability of some of the sites. The actual housing production over the next few years will answer questions regarding the appropriateness of having allocated four-hundred-and-ninety ADU ADU units to meet the lower-income arena. It remains to be seen whether our housing programs will do what they are supposed to do and whether they are adequate to support the city's obligation to affirmatively further fair housing in our community. It also remains to be seen whether the new Affordable Housing Additive Zone, section sixteen four twenty, and in particular, the development and design standards that and the special development requirements will actually facilitate or impede the production of housing. That's where we have the most concern as a few things were raised by Mark Pettit. But at least we have the makings of a blueprint that may hopefully improve our housing situation. And so for that, I'm very grateful. I also appreciate the city's commitment to ensure that this housing element is a living document that may be subject to changes as necessary during the planning period, especially since eight years is a long time. We cannot afford to have this document sitting on the on the shelf collecting dust. Other than that, I thank the commission, Ms. Mallory, Mr. Rosell and the city for taking this process seriously and with a desire to get it right. As a housing advocate, I really appreciate that. I thank you, and I'm ready to answer any questions you may have regarding the the letter that I submitted. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Macri Ortiz. We'll go to our next speaker, Jackson Piper.
Good evening, members of the planning commission and staff present. My name is Jackson Piper. I am a member with Ventura County MB Housing Advocacy Organization. And I wanted to thank everyone involved in crafting this housing element update. And it is an expansive document that I believe, as Ms. Macri Ortiz said, will go a very long way towards helping to alleviate the the housing problems that we have in Oxnard and throughout Ventura County and and hopefully other communities will follow the example of Oxnard here. I wanted to especially note the reduction in projected ADU production over the next eight years that was included in the document. And thank you for that because as as much as we love seeing high projections of housing, what we don't love is seeing what we feel are unrealistic projections of housing, especially with a type that is meant more as a supplemental addition to other housing types available that really support those in need of housing more than ADUs will. ADUs are a great thing, but they're kind of limited in who they really serve. So thank you for doing that. And I, from what I've reviewed of the housing element, I think that this is an excellent step for the city of Oxnard and for for housing within the city. So thank you very much. And please adopt this housing element and start building the housing we really need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piper, for your comments. And we'll go to our last speaker, Tom Cohen.
Hi, good evening, Chair Chavez and members of the planning commission. My name is Tom Cohen. I'm a thirty-year land use attorney, and I am currently working on three projects with a partner in the city. I want to applaud staff and everybody that put an extraordinary effort into this housing element update. We think it's a fine document. It responds to the need for housing. That's very critical. I have one important request for clarification that three projects we're working on. Two are on Lockwood, and both are identified as sites in the housing element, which is great. One is one-hundred percent affordable to seniors. The other one is is just a one-hundred percent affordable housing project for families. Our third project is located on Oxnard Boulevard, which will be a mixed-income project. I want to echo Mark Pettit's comments about certain of the standards that create some issues. But for most, the most part, the the standards that are laid out seem to work and certainly on all three of our projects with perhaps some minor exception. The clarification we're looking for relates to the affordability requirements. That doesn't really apply to the Lockwood project since they're all one-hundred percent affordable. But the Oxnard project, our mixed income project, the new standard is to provide twenty percent of the units for lower-income households. The current inclusionary housing ordinance to the city requires ten percent and then divides that ten percent where half of the units are for very low and half for low-income households. The proposed twenty percent doesn't call out a split between income levels, which is fine. In fact, we're proposing fifteen percent of the units in our Oxnard Boulevard project will be available for very low-income households. But we're left with five percent that we we would identify to low. But we're not sure what is really intended by the language in the in the the draft of the standards. So we would just ask if you could get clarification on that. But otherwise, we're fully in support. Again, we appreciate
Thirty seconds.
And we we hope that you guys will recommend that this housing element be moved to the council with your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen, for your comments. And Madam Secretary, just to confirm, that was our last speaker for this item, correct?
Correct.
Thank you for that. We'll go to Ms. Mallory to respond to any comments that were made by the public.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair, commissioners. Mr. Colwitz and I have requested that we take just about a three-minute recess. We have responses, but we want to collaborate, and we'll be tagging teaming the answers and responses to some of the questions that were posed to by the public speakers. So with that, it would be great for a three-minute recess.
Okay. So without objection, we'll go ahead and move to a three-minute recess and reconvene at seven forty-one. Thank you. Once again, go to Ms. Mallory and Ms. Colwitz to make any responses to any of the comments that were made by the public.
Thank you, Chair, Commission. So we we took notes based upon some of the comments that were received From the the public this evening. Um, one has to do with a question about the deviation in the standard from ten percent to twenty five percent. And it's our recommendation that we continue with the ten percent. That ten percent, the origins of that is based upon the spirit of the Affordable Housing Opportunity Program. Where a hundred percent affordable projects are granted that a ten percent reduction in numerical standards. So. For that context, that was a percentage that was vetted by counsel through that ordinance process. Additionally, it's very likely that development projects, affordable housing projects will propose additional concessions. Um, that would take them beyond that deviation and that percentage. So it's important to note that concessions and waivers. Uh, are also likely to come with some of these affordable housing projects thereby shrinking a potential. Or removing completely some some standards with, of course, appropriate findings. Additionally, the uh, it's important to remember that the reference to twenty five percent. As as summarized in the staff report on page seven, it talks about the twenty five percent is. A planned development permit. Uh, provision, meaning if you are seeking that PD permit, which is a discretionary permit. You can ask for that twenty five percent reduction. Uh, and again, the process that we're bringing forward involves a the ten percent as a ministerial and not a discretionary action. Uh, so that I'm going to cover that item and then there was additional items that Mr. Colwitz will cover and then hand it back to me to round it out at the end.
And members of the commission, thank you. Uh, the next set of standards that had been asked to be changed, we would talk about as being design considerations, if you will. Uh, the standards that we wrote were very much with an urban design lens. And in many ways, we were looking at the downtown code as being the model to follow. As we're looking at introducing higher density residential units in Oxnard. So with that stated, uh, starting off with uh. Essentially going through the four requests to change design standards. Uh, there was a request to modify the way that we uh, place our parking. Um, essentially, uh, how we've been designing our parking in downtown. Is really placing it either underneath or behind a building and moving the building closer to the street to really activate the street. And make it a pedestrian environment as much as possible through design. Uh, we would recommend that we keep the standard as written as it is essentially modeled on the downtown. Uh, we will note as well that that standard does have a um. Some language in it that says that if a design would be technically infeasible. To place the parking either underneath or behind the building as specified in this condition or in in the standard, that that would be a reason not to do it. Jumping down from there, there was a a comment about modifying. A standard related to primary streets and side street frontages and in particular. This standard has to do with development on a corner lot. And what this standard is looking for is on the ground floor. It's introducing what are called liner buildings or liner spaces on the ground floor, which is an occupiable space. Behind the occupiable space would be essentially a parking. Uh, you could put parking underneath the building. But for that first eighteen feet at a minimum, we would be looking for occupiable space. And essentially, the thought process that's in this is let's put something in that space where. People are going to be coming in and out of and it'll be causing some level of interest, some level of activity. That'll connect those buildings with the sidewalk and the the rest of the public right of way. The the standard that was that we wrote on this is as your the liner essentially would be required on the. Uh, the primary street frontage, but as you turn the corner and go down the secondary street, so the the not the dominant side. That secondary street would also have the the liner for the first seventy five feet of the property. And then after you get beyond that depth, then you wouldn't have to have a liner anymore. So it's really just trying to activate the street is really what we're getting at that and I can continue to hide the parking as much as possible. The next standard that was brought up was a concern essentially about. The placement of of windows. And one of the the standard that we wrote, the intent of this again is similar to the last one where we're trying to activate the street, draw some. Eyes on the street to use that phrase. Um, so it's partially a safety concern, partially an urban design concern. And as we think about our living spaces, the places that we're the most active in. Are places like our kitchens and our living rooms and other gathering spaces and our bedrooms tend to be more private spaces. So the intent of this regulation is to put those living spaces closer to the street right of way. Because that's where we're going to generate that coming and going and those eyes on the street. Um, and then the final item that had been requested was to make modification to our refuse standards. Uh, we already have modified it in the proposed ordinance to go from a hundred feet to a hundred and fifty feet. The hundred and fifty feet was selected because that matches our environmental resources divisions standards for how far. Uh, these developments, these trash enclosure closures should be from the buildings. Uh, moving it further than that to two hundred feet would be inconsistent with environmental resources standards. Uh, and essentially the concern that they have is one of stormwater quality and and waste where the further that we have to. Travel with our trash bags. The more opportunity is that they get dragged, that they get ripped open, that we leak and we create messes. So closer to the buildings is what they push for. And a hundred and fifty feet is what they use, both in the cities of Oxnard, as well as other jurisdictions that I've been in previously. And I think that match, uh, those are the the design standards that had been requested to change. Um, staff's uh, recommendation would be that we do not change any of those. Um, and that if a developer, a development is unable to meet those, that they would utilize one of the concessions that they would most likely be asking for. As they implement their projects. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it back to Kathleen.
Thank you, Scott. Um, the final question pertained to a question regarding. Uh, our additive zone, the additive zone, various sections speak to twenty percent lower income units. And Mr. Cohen is correct, our current inclusionary housing ordinance does say ten percent. Uh, and then it allocates and breaks that out by percentage. And our recommendation at this point is to is to continue with the twenty percent lower. The reality is we will be updating our inclusionary ordinance, and I know this is not to be confused with the additive ordinance. It's very different than the inclusionary, but. Through the process of updating the ordinance, we could potentially this ordinance, the additive ordinance down the road, look at that definition. And make a change to it, but at this point, we're recommending that we stay with the definition of of lower income at twenty percent. And I did want to offer the mic also to Emilio. If he would like to, Emilio Ramirez, to add any information on issues of affordability and. And just making any change in the percentage and and the implications.
Thank you, Kathleen and Emilio Ramirez, Housing Director. No, I don't think. I don't think I have much to add. If the twenty percent is clear that it would be lower and it could be lower than lower. Depending on the developers' package or financing structure, I think that would be acceptable.
Uh, Commissioner, I believe that and Chair, that answers the questions that we heard and we're happy to turn it back to the Chair. Uh, for any other questions or feedback.
Thank you, Ms. Mallory. Thank you, Mr. Colwitz and Ramirez for um, the the feedback and the responses. Commission, any additional questions? Commissioner Nash.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. My question. For Ms. Mallory and or Mr. Colwitz. As we look at these requests to um. Change the design standards. I feel that. It's not appropriate for us to. Involve ourselves at this point because each design standard change is worthy of its own planning commission herein. And we just don't have the time tonight to go over each design standard change request. Now, my question is. That I assume the dialogue between the affordable housing advocates. And the planning staff continues and. The uh, the appropriate place to hear some of these requests. Would be by the community services, public safety, housing and development committee. Where they could, uh, where they could fully vet some of these, some of these potential future changes. That could be um incorporated in an amendment to the general plan, which. Uh, I believe you can have quarterly amendments and the amendments can be um. Multiple amendments can be bundled together. So this is certainly a living document and that would be um. You know, that would be my preference than us taking uh, any action on some of these, on some of these design standard changes. You know, being 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 requested by the affordable housing advocates. So do you have, um. Again, for you know, for for for, correct me if I'm wrong, um. Ms. Mallory or Mr. Colwitz, would 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 that be the appropriate forum to hear to hear? Uh, you know, the results of 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 continuing dialogue between your staff and the housing app, the affordable housing advocates.
Uh, Chair and Commissioner Nash, uh, we we would agree that this is not the appropriate time to make changes to the ordinance for these design components. Consistent with uh, what Mr. Colwitz has indicated. So, uh, and the reasons why we put forward with a very deliberate and thoughtful process for the ordinance before you tonight. Um, I also, uh, in response to the question on the dialogue in the future, I was, um, I wanted to point the commission, there is a program in our housing element, which. Uh, which we're very excited to, we added it as a result of discussions with the affordable housing groups. We think it's a great idea. It's an annual. Housing element workshop and that's where we commit to sitting down and looking at, uh, how is it working? How's our, how's our ordinances? How are the sites? So. To your point, absolutely, we will continue to have these conversations. I started this presentation and commented saying, this is not the end. This is actually the beginning. Um, of our eight year process, an exciting process where we continue looking at our sites through our no net loss program and our annual report to HCD. We continue looking at our programs and we make requests for for budget and finance support through city council. And we continue implementing a number of programs. So your point is well taken, Commissioner, and I couldn't agree more hardly.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Nash, for your comments. I mean, sorry for your questions. Any additional questions from the commission? Um, Ms. Mallory, just real quick, and and I apologize if you've already touched on it. Um, but I actually want to bring up Ms. Macro T's letter that came into us this late afternoon. In particular, on page two, midway of page two, where she's talking about. Um, the OMC section five sixteen dash five thirty one. And how it's regardless of who the decision maker is, the burden that's going to place and then trying to determine if. If a project is actually going to be able to be denied. Um, can you touch just a little bit about that? Um, because I don't believe we can actually allow her to answer questions, correct? And I kind of look to counsel for that.
Um, I believe, uh, Chair, uh, Mr. Rozell, would you like to answer that I'm locating my letter?
Sure, I'll be happy to discuss this issue. The position raised by Ms. MacRorties is that. The the language in the ordinance places is unnecessary in places unfair burden. Um, on the planning commission applicant to require um, affordable housing development to obtain a special use permit. The point that while uh, we have appreciated Ms. MacRorties working with the city on a number of issues relating to the housing element. I think the important point for the the planning commission to focus on is the fact that. The Housing Accountability Act does not make the approval of housing ministerial. In other words, the. The city has the ability to require that a project go through different types of permits, including a special use permit. But if there's a desire to deny the project, it can only be denied if one of five findings is made. So. There are certain types of development where the planning commission or excuse me, the city's right to deny it is taken away. It's a minister requirement. But the Housing Accountability Act does not impose that uh, position on the city. So. We believe that the language which is proposed complies with the law. And to the extent that there is a a desire to deny, there are are very specific provisions in the law, which the city would have to meet. So we would recommend. That uh, the the language as drafted be maintained.
Thank you, Ms. Rozell. Ms. Mallory, did you have anything additional to add?
No, Chair, no, thank you. I do not.
Thank you. I I do have a question and Mr. Colwitz or Ms. Mallory, if you um, want to take this. Any recommended changes that the commission um, takes tonight? Say that we want to amend one of the ordinances. What is the the ripple effect or the process that ends up occurring? Um, based off of that action, if it's approved by the majority?
Uh, Chair, I'll start and of course, if Mr. Colwitz wants to answer further and give more feedback, I'd appreciate that. Um, we are on a very tight schedule. So of course, um, we can, we we do intend to communicate. The commission's input in the city council staff report, but we do need to uh. Move an action this evening. Um, and we would recommend that there the ordinances principally stay intact. Um, but we will be summarizing uh, input that we've received this evening from the commission and community in the October fifth council report. I'm not sure if Scott would like to add anything else.
No, I don't have anything else to add, but thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Mallory. Um. If the commission decides not to take any action this evening, what are the consequences of that? I understand we're on a very tight. Um, schedule, but what are the consequences of not taking any action?
Thank you, Chair. Um, what I wanted to express is that there are there are dire consequences with that. We, uh, this item and the entire housing element ordinances need to needs to go to city council on October fifth. The state has established a deadline of. Um, submission of the final housing element to HCD Housing Community Development and all implementing ordinances. They have to be to the state, the final housing element to the state by October fifteenth. And the first reading of the implementing ordinances has to have occurred by October fifteenth. Um, this is not something that we're shoehorning in. We began working on this in twenty nineteen. This is just the process and how long it takes. Um. So if the state, if the city does not implement the housing element or pardon me, adopt the housing element. Element by October fifteenth and submit it to the state. We are at risk of losing millions of dollars of grant money. We are on there, um, that we are subject to a, we are, um, how do I say this? Cities typically have an eight year housing element cycle, so we would just, we would be under this four year cycle with. Two, uh, with a mid-cycle review where we'd have to check in. After four years, give them another housing element, go through all this again, and then uh, submit another update one year later. And then. If the if the housing elements met with HCD's approval. Uh, we would then potentially be back on another eight year cycle, but you have to have two consecutive. Eight year approve approved housing elements, meaning you have to have two, basically over sixteen years, right? Because each housing element covers an eight year window. You have to have two consecutive on time housing elements to not. Uh, have stipulated requirements and and to not. and, and to not be under an, an extra scrutiny of submittal and having to submit the housing element in incremental phases, like four years and then the one year I mentioned. So it's, it's a very big deal. I was on a call again today with a number of cities and everyone, everyone is very much scrambling to make sure they get it through on time. And scramble is probably not the best word. We have been working deliberately and in, as you've heard tonight, in cooperatively with the advocacy groups. But we, we, it, it simply has to have an action by October fifth to keep this, the city in good, in good standing.
I appreciate that response, Ms. Mallory. Just a final question before I go back to my commissioners. How often are you allowed to make adjustments to the housing plan? I know you said there was a mid-cycle one, but is it possible to do more modifications? Or is it only that one time during the eight years?
The housing element can be amended four times per year. And actually, all the general plan elements for that matter.
Just, just to clarify, the, because we're a general law city, we can make amendments to our general plan four times a year. And as you know, the housing element is part of the general plan. So you can have four sets of amendments per year.
And one other item to add to that is a general plan application is not limited to how much or how few or how many edits you make at any one point in time. It's just four separate actions to amend the general plan. So that can be quite a few changes in any given calendar year.
I appreciate that. And that could just be done by a request of the commission? Or is that something that the council has to direct staff to bring back for an amendment?
Chair Chavez, it could be initiated by either the planning commission or the council or a private developer could submit an application as well. There is no limitation on the number of initiations. What the limit is, is the number of actions.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Colwes and Rozell and Ms. Mallory. Commissioners, any additional questions? Vice Chair Rahal.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to follow up briefly, hopefully, on one of Chair Chavez's questions in regards to the consequences if an approval is not made. What is, regardless of when the planning commission meets, what is the last date that the planning commission could approve the resolutions before us in order for it to get to the city council on October five? The subtext is if the planning commission wanted to have a special meeting, what would be the last date to have it if possible? Thank you.
Chair, Commissioner, this would be the last meeting. This would be the last meeting in light of the fact that the, the agenda for the city council for October fifth publishes, I believe, on September twentieth or roughly around that, that timeframe, very shortly. And also, and also, I will say also with the public noticing requirements too. This would be a public hearing and the, the, the timeframes for placing that ad in the paper and noticing the properties does not afford for this to continue to another special meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Mallory.
If I can, sorry. I apologize. If I can clarify as well, the, the agenda for the October fifth meeting publishes on the twenty-third. But there is, of course, the lead time before that. So that is, that is the, the drop dead deadline when it has to go to print under the city sunshine ordinance.
Thank you for, Ms. Rozell. I just wanted to see the, the greatest amount of flexibility possible, given the constraints that we have. So thank you very much, and thank you, Chair. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Vice Chair Rahal. Commissioners, if there's no further questions, we can go ahead and move into deliberation or take a motion for this item. Again, this is an action item. What is the pleasure? If there is no desire for any, Commissioner Nash? Yeah, mute.
Almost. So close. I didn't mean to interrupt you, Chair Chavez. If, if you wanted to complete your statement, and then I will make a motion.
If there's no deliberation from the commissioner, it's, I, I believe it would be appropriate. Vice Chair, did you have any deliberations or were you looking towards a motion as well?
Apologies for that delay. I can't touch the unmute button. I, I was going to say something in deliberation. I'm happy to talk to the motion if it is made by Commissioner Nash. So I'm willing to wait for Commissioner Nash's deliberation or motion. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Nash, did you want to make that motion or allow deliberations?
Thank you, Chair. I will move the recommended action.
Chair Chavez, this is Scott Colwes. We do have one quick question for the motion measure. Commissioner Nash, we did introduce a memo tonight that had several edits to the ordinances. So staff is, is wondering if your motion specifically Part E, as identified in the agenda, would incorporate a reference to the planning mission making the edits specified in modification memo number one?
Thank you. I will restate my motion to include the, the edits as recommended by staff in the, in the, in the memo to the, to the agenda. Does that cover it?
Yes, we can work with that.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a second? Vice Chair Rahal?
I second, Chair.
Thank you for that. It has been moved a second to approve project named City of Oxford, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-nine Final Housing Plan, Planning and Zoning Permit Number twenty-six twenty-zero-three General Plan Amendment. Recommendations is to receive the presentation on the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-nine Final Housing Element, Six-Cycle Housing Element Attachment One. Open the public hearing and receive public input, review the draft initial study and mitigate a negative declaration and recommend the city council approval of the environmental document. Adopt a resolution twenty twenty-one double X recommending city council adopt the twenty twenty-one, twenty-nine Final Housing Element update to replace in its entirety the current twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-one housing element as chapter eight within the twenty thirty general plan and text and maps. And map changes to the general plan land use element attachment three. Adopt a resolution twenty twenty-one double X recommending city council approval of text amendments to chapter sixteen of the Oxford City Code to facilitate construction of housing units as stipulated in the city's final housing element with the edits of modification memo number one. Adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-one double X recommending city council approval of zoning map amendments to facilitate construction of the housing units as stipulated in the final housing element. Is there any discussion on that motion, Vice Chair Rahal?
Thank you, Chair Chavez. Yes, I speak in support of the motion before the planning commission, especially in regards to the programs identified, described and updated by the staff in regards to affordable housing. There are just so many different amendments and updates, which I am very appreciative and look positively upon in regard to increasing the housing in Oxnard in an equitable way for all neighborhoods, for the city at large, and for, by extension, the county also. I would like to have a brief comment in regards to the housing element that I, I have looked at other cities and Oxnards in the past. And I, I find that sometimes there are some elements of the, or some parts of the housing element that may appear more idealistic than can actually be done in the realistic, in actual real life. And hopefully, the planning commission will seriously consider looking at this before, maybe even on an annual period. But I believe that as the motion before stands today, that all planning, that the planning commission should support it. Thank you, Chair Chavez.
Thank you, Vice Chair Rahal. Any further discussion on that motion? I'll just make the comments real quick that, you know, I'm very pleased with the work that has been done. As mentioned already by the public, that it's a good process that are in place and that this is a living document and we are constantly looking to make improvements. And it's all for the betterment of our city. So if there's no further discussions, Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I would just like to comment on the challenges posed by the housing element. I think it's important for the public and all of us to understand that the numbers, the Rena numbers are basically voiced upon the city. And there's limited opportunity for feedback and request for adjustment. And, you know, there's a lot of pieces in play in terms of how those are decided and whether it makes sense and whether it's not. And I understand that those developing the housing element, Ms. Mallory and, and team have to work with those Rena numbers, which I think are, as Vice Chair would put it, idealistic in a lot of ways and not necessarily realistic, and we need to make the best face of it that we can. So I think that's important to keep in mind. There's, there's a limited ability to make it as workable as we can. And I, and I commend the team for doing as fine a job as they have.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer. There's no further discussion on the motion. Madam Secretary, if we can have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Nash?
Aye.
Vice Chair Rahal?
Aye.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Chair Chavez?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you for that, and congratulations to our city. And hopefully, everything continues to go as smooth as, as possible. We'll go ahead and move into our next item, which is item G, Study Sessions and Reports. There's nothing listed. We'll now move to planning commission business. Commissioners, any business to bring before the commission? Commissioner Connolly?
I just wanted to support and elaborate on Commissioner Nash's statement about the packets that we receive. I thoroughly love having a paper copy of the agenda and supporting documents. I tried to do it on my iPad and it's just a lot easier in person. But I do agree that possibly the PowerPoint presentations could be shrunk down to maybe six per page, six front, six back, to be twelve per page to save some paper. If this is the time and place for that, if not, I can send D an email. And then also, if there was a place, I just throw it in my recycle bin. But if there was a place at the city, you know, center where they did paper-only recycling or shredding, like I would be more than glad to drop off my paperwork there every week, every other week.
Thank you, Commissioner Connolly, and I'm sure staff will respond later. Commissioner Nash?
Thank you, Chair Chavez, and thank you, Commissioner Connolly, for your comments about that. It, it's, and anything we can do to decrease waste and increase efficiency, I think, I think, I think it's appropriate. I want to thank Kathleen Mallory and her team for preparing the housing element and bringing it before the planning commission and the, and the community. It was, you know, that was quite a Herculean task. And I, I don't think people appreciate all of the work that, that goes into it. Having read it, I certainly, I certainly appreciate all of the work that went into it. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Nash. Any additional comments from the commission? I'll just echo some of those comments from Commissioner Connolly in regards to the packets as well as Commissioner Nash's comments. I appreciate the packet, but I would actually like to request that I don't receive a hard copy anymore. It is a large packet that we received. I, I just wondering if there's a different platform that we could use when we're viewing these packets online? That kind of has like a flip page motion of versus the PDF format that they have? Just to try to save some paper, because at the end of the day, it just goes into the recycling. And, you know, it's not like I keep it as sentimental value. So that would just be my request that I no longer receive a hard copy. And if need be, I can always print it at home if I need the actual hard copy. I will echo also Commissioner Nash's comments in regards to the housing element and staff's work on it is working with the public, and I appreciate the public's input because it, it's a very large document. We had two meetings on it, and now it's going to the council and they only get one meeting with it. So it's a lot of work, and this determines our next eight years of housing development in our city. My final comment would be that today is actually Mexican, Mexico's Independence Day. It wasn't actually the, the end or their liberation, but it was actually the start of a decade-long challenge to be liberated from Spain. So there will be a lot of celebrations. I know the, the council of Mexico and the board, they had a celebration last night to commemorate the event. So it's not Cinco de Mayo. So for those that think Cinco de Mayo is Independence Day, it's not. So I just wanted to make those comments. And with that, that would wrap up my comments. If there's no further comments from the commission seeing and hearing none, we'll go to our community development staff updates, Mr. Colwes.
Chair Chavez and members of the commission, thank you again for, for having us tonight, working, working tirelessly on the documents we've been sending you. You all did your homework and we're appreciative of that. So I, I wanted to make a quick comment about the staff reports. Two different comments. First and foremost, yeah, we can look for different platforms and ways to try to minimize the size of them. If any of you want to receive only electronic versions, that's something that's absolutely easy for us to do. So that's, that's the positive comment, trying to meet your intent. On the flip side, as Ken and I work on the projects, we also need to make sure that every project is defensible and its own independent entity, if you will. If we're challenged in any project, it's what's in the record is what we get to defend it on. So the thoroughness of the reports, even if it seems like, hey, I've seen this before because it's similar to other reports, it, it is intentional that we're doing it that way because these are all independent actions. But we'll, we'll look for ways to try to minimize it. And again, if any of you wanted to have electronic-only packets, we can certainly accommodate that. That's not a problem. Moving on to other items that the city council has acted upon recently and what's coming up on future agendas. So September seventh, last week, they did take action on the Peninsula Road Street Vacationing Item and recommended that, it, it's actually a two-part action. So they took the first step to move forward with that. And on October fifth, will be taking their second action to vacate the right-of-way and put in an easement. So that, just as a reminder, is what will allow the hotel development or redevelopment to occur at the end of Peninsula Road. So we're, we're excited about that. And then coming up on September twenty-first, that's when the Firearms Ordinance Amendment is being reviewed by them. Again, after they take action on that item, we will report back to you, just to let you know how that concluded, assuming that we have a conclusion that evening. So with that, that is the end of my updates that I have for you tonight. So again, just thank you for all your efforts, and we look forward to playing with you again at a So again, just thank you for all your efforts, and we look forward to playing with you again at another meeting soon.
Thank you, Mr. Colwitz. Vice Chair Raho?
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I would just like to ask, Mr. Colwitz, is there a possibility we could be meeting in person next month? I thought that there was, the earliest possibility would have been in October, but I don't know if construction is over in the city council chambers. Just really want to see people in person. Thank you very much.
Vice Chair Raho, I wish I could say that we were ready for the in-person meetings, but the remodel in the chamber still is ongoing, so we're not quite ready for that. But we will let the commission know as soon as, as soon as we know that we can have an in-person meeting, we'll let you know.
Thank you very much, Mr. Colwitz.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions or comments to staff on this update? Seeing and hearing none, we'll go ahead and move to a German, and if there's no objection, since there's no further business before the commission, we will be adjourning to our next meeting Thursday, October seventh, twenty twenty-one at six P M. As always, thank you, commissioners and staff, for all your hard work, and have a great night. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Well, commissioners, staff, good night.